All right, good evening. We're gonna call to order the meeting of Monday, April 27, 2020. We'll all rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, would you call and roll?
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino. Here. Here, Councilor Guanasso. Oh. I'm... One second, I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, unmute the counselors. If you can, if the counselors can please unmute themselves if they haven't already. Okay, Councilor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowosowski?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers? Councilor Powers is here, it looks like he's having a problem with bandwidth. Councilor Rotundo?
President.
Here, Councilor Serino?
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti?
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith?
Here.
Here, Coram is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to state before we started the meeting, and if everyone that is not speaking, if you could use the mute function, we will also have any panelists that wish to speak. They may raise their hand, and we will definitely try to get to them. We'll be bouncing from screen to screen to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And for the counselors, when there's a topic or emotion that's brought up, I will go in order of the roll call to go down the list if I see that you want to speak. If I don't, then I may skip over you. You can raise your hand like this, or you can use the raise hand function and operate your mute on your own. But if anyone's speaking out of turn, I may hit the mute button. Madam Clerk, you have it.
Point of, um, personal privilege, please?
State your point, and then we're gonna have Ashley start the meeting.
Okay, so first, I would like to personally thank everybody that donated food or money to the food pantry at the First Congregational Church. Three weeks ago, the pantry ran out of food, giving out 526 bags, not realizing that 300 new people would show up that night. Last week, we had over 1,000 people. One of the examples how people have stepped up to help out the pantry is Ralph Toretta of Toretta Bakery. He has baked 300 loaves of bread funded by the Mercurial Brothers and will deliver it to the Romney Marsh Academy on Wednesday. There are so many people to thank, but I can't name them all. So I'm just gonna say a few things, Revere nonprofit organizations donated, local businesses donated, and some individuals made sizable donations. I want to thank them. And lastly, I would like to thank everybody who has volunteered to make the food pantry possible to feed people. The volunteers unloaded trucks, put bags on of food together, and handed them out. This still continues. Thank you for your selflessness. And as a cliche, as people might think, it takes a village, and that's the truth. That is what the residents of Revere did. They stepped up during the crisis and continue to do so. So many people signed up and volunteers had to be turned away because there were so many of them. I just want to say that I am so proud that I am from Revere. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna, and Madam Clerk, would you continue on?
Mr. President, may I interrupt, please?
Councilor Rotundo?
Can we just take a moment of silence for those that have passed? For those that have lost family members that belong to our community as people from the community at large, as well as those people that work for our city? Those that are sick that work for our community? And those that live in our community that are sick? I would just like to take a moment of silence.
Certainly. Moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I take one more moment, please?
Sure, Councilor.
Please trust, this will be invaluable.
Sure.
Of the 3,000-plus lost to this scourge, I gotta make a special thanks to the people over at the Mass General who have done an excellent job in serving our community. Without them, to be quite honest with you, we would not be in the situation that we're in. Considering we have a very large number of people that have COVID-19. They have done an excellent job. They care for our loved ones. I want everyone to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think we all agree. Madam Clerk?
Moving on, calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 23, 2020.
Go ahead.
Calendar item number three, public hearings. Hearing called is ordered on an amendment to the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to mechanical parking systems.
This time, we'd like to open it up to any proponents, any proponents in the audience wishing to speak, any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, this is Frank Stringi, Revere City Planner. From time to time, we have to upgrade our zoning ordinance to reflect new uses that are popular and common throughout urban areas. And mechanical parking systems is one of those uses. You've seen them all through Boston, and you're gonna start seeing them. We have requests now to install them in Revere. And they provide developers with a flexible option to meet parking requirements. So, under the definition that we're putting in, strict definition, is an automated parking system is powered by electric motors within a horizontal and vertical conveyor platform system that slides or lifts each vehicle to its storage location and allows all vehicles to be retrieved independently and which provides system users access to their vehicles without requiring them or others to physically move any other vehicle out of the way of their vehicles, such as tandem parking. So these are not typical lift systems where you have to wait for another car to come out for you to get your vehicle. These are on slider conveyor systems where you can access your vehicle at grade on the ground. So we'll pick your vehicle and bring it to an empty spot within the system where you can enter it and drive it off. And we've seen these 10 vehicles and these conveyor systems, 12 vehicles, and they basically double the amount of vehicles that you would have in that space. Now, these systems will only be allowed in the RC-1 district, RC-2 district, the PDD-1 district, which is Suffolk Downs, the PDD-2 district, which is Wonderland Dog Track, general business district, our highly business district, and our TED district, and industrial park districts. And they'll all be subject to the review and approval of the Site Plan Review Committee. And as you may see through how we wrote these ordinances, these systems have to comply with a number of dimensional zoning and parking requirements. They must provide system users grade level access, like I stated. In addition to mechanical parking systems, parking spaces must also conform to the number of required handicap parking spaces and meet our code requirements for at-grade parking. Also, all mechanical parking systems, installation must meet all fire safety and building code requirements for elevator systems and include safety gates, backup vehicles.
Mr. President, Frank, excuse me for a second.
In case of power failure. A bus pass installation and operational inspectional test is required by all applicable federal state regulations and codes. So we put a number of safeguards into these systems that require them to provide operation and maintenance inspection reports to the ISD Inspection Service Department and Fire Department. Well, that's it in a nutshell for these systems.
Thank you, Mr. Stringi. And I know we have other, this is, obviously, this is the open hearing part where we're gonna hear from proponents, opponents, and then the counselors. So any other proponents wishing to speak? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. I concur with everything that Counselor Stringi had said. By the way, I'm Bob O'Brien, I live at 10 Ocean Avenue, and I'm Director of Economic Development for the City of Revere. As I say, I fully support Frank's position. It reflects the input of all of the members of the Site Plan Review. I believe it enjoys the support of all of the members of the administration. I believe the mayor is on this call, but I think I can speak for him in saying that he supports this as well. And I might note that one of the early proponents of this change in the zoning was HYM, who are contemplating the use of automated parking at Suffolk Downs if and when this change is implemented. So I think it does catch up the zoning to the 21st century technology, and I heartily recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Any in the audience not seeing any hands? Let me see, the attendees, I have one raised hand. Ralph DeChico? Did you wish to speak, Ralph?
Yes, Ralph DeChico, Commissioner of Disabilities. Neither a proponent or opponent, I just have a question as to how the regulation is gonna be in place for residents for the parking, handicap parking spots? How that's going to be implemented? Because there wasn't really no clarification on that, because some of the residents have, do have mobility issues and how that's going to be working for, if it's gonna be the automatic parking apparatus? Some of them have to get in and out of their vehicles. Is there gonna be a special spot for them to be loading and unloading? Because usually, I know there's requirements say that it's gonna be the proper amount of handicap spots in distances, but how is that going to work for the requirements for the vehicles?
So I'm not sure if Bob or Frank, if you can answer that?
Yeah, I can answer that, Mr. President. So our handicap parking spaces will be provided at grade. There will be no mechanical system parking spaces allowed to meet that requirement. So our handicap standards will stay the same, at-grade handicap dimensional requirements. The requirement is one space for every 25 spaces have to be handicapped.
Thank you. And any other proponents looking at the hands, no other hands are being raised? Any other proponents? Okay, we're gonna turn this over to any opponents? Any opponents? Any in the audience looking, and no hands are being raised right now? So we're gonna close that side of the hearing. I'm gonna offer this to the counselors, any counselors wishing to speak? We're gonna go in order from, if everyone can mute, we're gonna go from Jess, no, Arthur, Councilor, no, McKenna? Morabito, Nowosowski, looks like Councilor Nowosowski wishes to speak?
I do, thank you, Mr. President. Throw you to Frank Stringi, because he seems to be the go-to guy, and there's nothing against you, Bob O'Brien. But I know someone tried to use one of these down on a project on the beach, and things were up in the air because we didn't have the proper zoning for it. But is there, is there a minimum square foot on the piece of property that it may go? That it could be put? I don't know what the square footage is, how many, yeah, you kind of machines they would have in a particular lot. Frank?
Yeah, no, there is no minimum square foot. Obviously, the minimum area that is allowed within that district is the minimum area for development. But for these mechanical parking systems within the parking garage, which they would be located, again, they have to meet our minimum parking garage dimensional requirements, which is eight and a half feet by 17 feet for each parking space.
So you would have, if I may, Mr. President, so you would have actually two vehicles in one of this nine-by-18 spaces with this machine? Because they'd be stacked?
They would be, they would be on a conveyor system. They would not, they would be stacked on a conveyor system where one space would always be open. So as they, as they rotate the vehicles to come back down to grade, that vehicle goes into the empty space, and then the then the individual enters a vehicle from that space and drives off. So there's no waiting for moving cars out and backing them back in.
Yeah. The other, the other question I have, Mr. President, is in the GB district, you know, I only have two lots that I believe in the Shirley Ave area that these could potentially go. One in North Shore Road and one in Shirley Ave. And I think, you know, with the, I would have a problem with them going into these two locations. Because you have a lot of cars in there now, it's a very dense district. And, you know, I would hope that when Site Plan Review got it in my area that they would look very hard at it, you know, because I would have, I would have a problem with it.
Thank you, Counselor. And I know I missed Councilor Guanasso, Councilor Guanasso, you wish to speak?
This is a zoning ordinance change, it has to go before the zoning subcommittee for further review. At that point in time, all of the details and questions of the membership could be answered at that time. I think we'd be worthy to send this over to the zoning subcommittee.
Good point. I know that during the public hearing, while we had a couple of the panelists, I know that Councilor Powers was wishing to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have questions. I think the first question would be, how would this affect a piece of property in the RC-1 or RC-2 district? Where a person could put in, let's say, for hypothetically, 12 units as a matter of right? And however, one thing they would not meet would be the parking requirements. So would we be adding extra parking to an area like that?
Yes, Counselor, as you were aware, a lot of those developments in that area have come before the zoning board of appeals because they have not met the parking requirement. This actually allowed them to meet the parking requirement, gives them an option to meet the reparking requirement, and use the rest of their property or that building for a more suitable use in parking structure.
And how would this, how would these parking spaces be maintained? Would there be an onsite person? Let's say there were a dozen spaces, and, you know, you're in inclement weather down on the boulevard, you've got a lot of water coming in that could constitute rust on some of these, some of this equipment. How, who would be there to maintain? That's my question.
Well, the management company, as well as the the provider of the equipment, are required to submit an operation and maintenance agreement to the ISD office and Fire Department. And I could go through with the ordinance, we have a number of safeguards in here that explains that. But one of them is that they have to provide, you know, backup accessibility to these in case of power failures, they have to have a backup system. They have to have a system in place that allows people to move their cars for storage once the system to be maintained. And every year repairs will have to be done to the system and maintained. So they have to have, provide space where these vehicles that would be in that conveyor system be parked within the site.
Yeah, you know, Frank, I think you'll agree with me. We're all familiar with property management companies. We've had a lot of good ones, and we've had some that were not so good. And I'm just wondering how a person buying a condo or living in an apartment, how it would work for them if all of a sudden they come out somewhere and the system wasn't working, and they couldn't get a property management company to come there before so many hours had elapsed? So I have, I have my questions, I understand this is going to the zoning subcommittee, but I have my questions regarding this type of system. But I can understand at Suffolk Downs, it's a, it's a large project over there. I can understand at Wonderland, and I'm sure they're gonna have people on hand, as they do with the MGH. They have these same systems on the, at the MGH for parking. And I'm just wondering, you know, are we setting up future residents up for a great disappointment someday when these systems are not working as they should? And again, this will be going to the zoning subcommittee, so I'm gonna reserve any more comment I have until the zoning subcommittee meeting. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Powers?
I can just answer some of Councilor Powers' questions. We did build into this a plan to provide alternate transportation for system users in case the event that they're unable to access their vehicles. So that's part of the operation and maintenance plan. And that would be up to the management company, provide suitable alternative transportation for those, for those people.
Thank you. And Councilor Rotundo wishes to speak?
Yes, thank you. Frank, first and foremost, I'm thankful that you're here to be able to speak to us. And I'm thankful that you're giving us this presentation and pass on my condolences. And that said, my understanding, this is a carousel system? Will this be indoors or will it be outdoors?
This will all, Counsel, this will all be indoor, indoor garage spaces.
Is it the intent of, sure. Would you know if it's the intent of HYM to increase their density at this time with the ability to improve parking?
They cannot, they cannot increase their density, Counselor. They're subject to special permit requirements that were issued by the City Council.
Thank you.
Hold on, density.
So this is a system that is widely used in Europe. It's widely used in America. I have used it extensively in Madrid, and I can tell you it works very, very, very well. They have a safeguard process in Spain in which a person whose car is not allowed to be removed from that, for whatever reason, and these are only certain sites, that they're allowed to get like a zipcar and then are able to go about their business and then return back to the city. That is something that perhaps we can speak about in committee and see if HYM would like to work with the management company to ensure something of that nature is within their process. And I'm not talking about an hour or two hour, although that is an inconvenience. I'm talking about somebody who's inconvenienced for four hours. You know, you've got kids, you've got kids with you. You know, there has to be something there, and perhaps if someone who does not live in the area, there should be a methodology. But at the end of the day, I want that safeguard there. And I think that's a fair safeguard. I think the economics of it is, you know, more than reasonable. And more importantly, I understand that part of his plan is to also put zipcars and bikes and so forth there. So this can help complement that process. I think more importantly, let me catch my breath, I'm sorry. This is something that's gonna be beneficial for the community. I support it wholeheartedly. And thank you.
Thank you. And any other councils wishing to speak? Counselor, oh, we have Councilor Nowosowski.
Just one question, if I may. Frank, is it possible to get some kind of a picture or a video of how this thing works for the subcommittee meeting?
Yes, I can provide that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And there was a, there was someone that wanted to speak, an attendee, but they had no identification. Councilor Zambudo? You wish to speak?
Unmute.
I got you, there you go.
Obviously, I don't want to take up much more of this meeting because we've already taken up too much of it, it's going to zoning. But I appreciate Counselor Nowosowski asking for the literature. I would just ask Frank that we bring everything relevant to the subcommittee meeting. If there's a PowerPoint presentation about this product, and I know you're gonna be diligent in putting all these safeguards in place. So I look forward to the zoning subcommittee, thank you.
Thank you. And with that being said, I will refer this to zoning subcommittee.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
If you could ask the councils to check their their text messages, I just sent them out what a car system looks like.
Great, thank you. And we're gonna move this on to the zoning subcommittee.
Okay, next item on the agenda, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $800,000 for fats, oils, and grease control program and capacity management operations and maintenance equipment procurement.
At this point, we're opening it up to proponents, any proponents wishing to speak? And I know that city engineer, Nick Reisstrom, submitted a communications to the, to the council. If you could submit that to record. I don't think you need to read it, it was, he was a proponent.
Okay.
And I know John Charamella is on, I'm not sure if you wish to speak, John? But if you would, you're welcome to.
Yes, okay. Ashley can read Nick's letter first.
She's gonna put it into the record. Which is, do any of the councils wish to hear the reading? We can waive the reading and just enter it into record as a opponent. Mr. Charamella?
Sure. It's Don Charamella, Superintendent of the Water and Soil Department. Live at 215 Rice Avenue, Revere. So the fat soil and grease program is a program that the city is in urgent need of. We have restaurant businesses and unfortunately, some homeowners that what we do is we dispose of the fat soil and grease into the sanitary sewer system, which creates soil blocks, and it actually congeals into the cold water, into the soil mains, and creates a maintenance problem and a soil block issue. A lot of the soil, a lot of the overtime that we spend is on emergency calls for soil blocks. We in badly need of some new equipment. We had two pieces, we have two pieces of equipment, a 19-year-old jetter truck and a 20-year-old vector truck that we're in dire need of replacing. So, and, and just a program that, the week, a program to help the businesses maintain their grease traps and, you know, clean them in a program to dispose of the fat soils and grease in a proper manner.
Thank you. And as the proponent side of the hearing, any other proponents wishing to speak? I don't see any attendees raising hands. Any opponents? We're gonna close the side of the proponents, and we're gonna open it to opponents. Any opponents wishing to speak? From the attendees, we have raised hand, and that's Wayne. We're gonna allow you to talk. Wayne? You wish to speak? You're unmuted.
Yeah, unmute there, Wayne. Okay, I'm unmuted now. I'm just wondering, I just heard something about us servicing grease.
Wayne, Wayne, we all know you, our name and record, just can you give us your name and address for the record? I know who you are, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne Rose, 19 Thorn dyke Street, Revere.
Thank you, thank you very much.
The only thing that I just heard in there was, we're gonna serve, help service grease traps in businesses? I thought that was up to the business to service their own grease traps.
Good, good question, I was gonna ask the same thing, but good question, I'm sure that, Mr. Charamella?
No, we're not gonna service them, but we have rules and regs to help. No, not going to service them, but we have rules and regs to make help to make sure that they're cleaned. So in other words, to enter the properties, to look at their records, to make sure that they're cleaning them in a proper, in a timely manner and disposing of the fat soil and grease in a in a in a proper way so that they're removed off site. That's all. Just a program to enter the pro enter the premises and and to just to check on the on the grease traps. We're not actually not actually doing the work. Right now, we're actually doing the work, removing the fat soil and grease out of the soil mains. When it congeals, so basically what we have is 12-inch ID bikes that are being necked down to four inches because of fat soil and grease that fills up on the sides of the pipe. So we're not actually, right now, we're actually maintaining it. We're actually removing the fat soil and grease because they're ending up in the soil. We don't want them to end up in the soil. We want to get them. We want to make sure that the businesses are removing them before it enters our soil mains.
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak? I'm looking at the attendees in the audience. We're going to close that side of the hearing. We're going to open up the councils. I see counselor, we're going to go down in order again. We're going to go to Counsel Guanasso. Counsel Guanasso.
Mr. President, is this going to Ways and Means Subcommittee?
This this could be voted on tonight, but if you if we, I know there's some urgency behind it, but if you wish to end this put this into Ways and Means we can, but we're actually hoping to vote on this tonight.
I just asked the question.
Yeah, we'd like to vote on this tonight.
Okay.
And any other councils wishing to speak? Counsel Rotendo, I see your hand is raised.
Um, actually, I think I'm gonna pass. I apologize.
Okay, Council Novoselfski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Donny. Are we talking one back the truck plus another piece of equipment or how much does a back the truck cost?
Kind of hear you, Donny. I'll unmute you. I got you.
The back the truck costs $550,000.
Okay.
We have one that's that's 19 years old, that's to 2004. And it's basically just it can't really do the job that we that it's intended to do. It's it's just very old piece of machinery.
Does that get does that get sold or traded in?
Traded in.
And what happens to the other 250,000?
I'm the to the 250,000 for the fat soil and grease?
Yeah.
So that's so we the it's so you're basically what we're doing is we're putting together a program so that we can actually monitor the businesses and maintain, you know, the maintain, well, not we're not going to maintain, but ma- make sure that the businesses are maintaining their records. So.
Are we going to need another piece of equipment beside the back the truck?
We already we already procured a piece out of the we already procured a new new piece, 250,000, 255,000 dollars. It's a jetter truck, so it replaced the old yellow 19-year-old jetter truck that we recently traded in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council, then Council Powers.
Counselor Novoselski asked my questions and they were just, thank you.
Okay, so you're good. Council Powers? All right, well, we're skipping on council. We're going to go to Council Zambudo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I know a little about this stuff and this is very well needed. The, you know, this is a problem that's been going on for years and it's about time it's getting addressed. So I certainly support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's one counselor who represents an area that is probably more heavily impacted by the water and drainage than any other section in the state, maybe with the existence of the water six. I support this wholeheartedly. I know that Donny Chamarra, since he's come on board, I've seen a tremendous improvement in the problems with sewage, water, and drainage in the Ward five area. And and I could think of no better way to spend money than on a piece of equipment that will continue those improvements down the road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel. And I know that there's an attendee wishing to speak again. I'm gonna unmute the attendee, name and record, name and address for the record, and then we're gonna go.
Wayne Rose, 19 Thondike Street.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, where where we're finding these chunks of grease in our main soil lines? Are we going in and we are we looking towards the restaurants in that area? Buying them for dumping illegally into our system?
Mr. President, may may offer a point of
Council Rotendo?
Information?
Yep.
So Wayne and Donny, correct me if I'm wrong. In my experience with this issue, and I'm sure councils in Vudo can as well, it's not solely just these particular industries, okay? You've got homes that do it. You've got pretty much everybody that does it. And what this does is it increases the calcification, if you will, on onto the tubes, all the pipes. And then what happens is they break. It increases their actual, my opinion, because of the way that it works in houses and anything else. It increases the ability of it to break. And not only that, I believe fines.
Correct. So in and Mr. Charamella, before we 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 one of the questions I had, which was very similar to some of the concerns was, you know, working in the restaurant business. This is, I would hope that this is added to the regular schedule from our health and health departments inspections or inspectional services on the annual, making sure that these these businesses are monitored. They should have grease trap pumping quarterly or biannually at a minimum. I'm not, I can't, I don't know for sure what the city requires in Revere, but I know that what my businesses require. So I would hope that we we enforce that with our order of health. Secondly, I just want to, I I know that your department does a very good job and I know that the communication from the city engineer is very thorough and the money will not go to waste. I know we need the truck. So that's the big, but I just wanted to make sure that we could the enforcement is happening and that it's actually not just, we're not just leaving it up to the honor system here, correct?
So one of the speakers is you made a good point to try to identify the areas. Actually, there was a couple of good points made. It's not just the businesses, it's homeowners too. I mean, I there are people that I, you know, I I asked, how do you dispose of your bacon grease, you know, the bacon fat? Oh, we pour it down the drain. So yes, he's there's two good points for being made. It's not just the businesses, it's also the residents. So we do have flyers that go out explaining about how to dispose of the fat soils and grease instead of throwing it down the drain to just actually dispose of it. But also, it was a good, it was a good point made to the businesses. We can't usually identify particular businesses. We do TV, so with the camera truck that what the city council also had led us fund about five years back. We do TV the 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 soil mains. So we do see where grease is it grease is coming from from some certain businesses. Once we do identify them, we we notify in special services and they actually go visit the properties and speak to them about maintaining the grease trap. Mike Wells put together a very comprehensive program about now that he out that he's handed out to the businesses to for inspection program. So we actually have some enforcement in place.
Thank you. All right, any other councils? We're gonna we're gonna ask for a roll call, roll call on this, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President.
Counselor?
I'm sorry, interrupt before a count, roll call, but for the people. This is all you need, guys. This right here, nice little can. You say, don't laugh at me, Donny. You know what I'm talking about. I've been at your mother's house down on Lincoln Ave when she lived down there. She had one of these.
Thank you.
You know what? Any good Italian family, any good Spanish family? Any good family that come along?
All right, roll call, please.
Roll call on the loan order. Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $800,000 for fats, oils, and grease control program and capacity management operations and maintenance equipment procurement? Counselor Janino?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotendo?
Yes.
Counsel Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
Thank you.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on an amendment to the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to brew pubs.
Okay, just a reminder, because we are pushing it a little bit, is we this is going to go to zoning subcommittee, but we're going to open this up public hearing to proponents. Any proponents wishing to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Frank Stringy again, city planner.
Thanks, Stringy.
I'll be very brief. Brew pubs, another use we're introducing to our zoning ordinance. We update our zoning. It's a new twist on what we have for restaurants. The brew pubs have been very popular in our surrounding communities of Lynn, Salem, Chelsea, Everett. And if anybody has ever been to Salem Beer Works, they know what they know what a brew pub is. They produce beer there and they also serve food. So this is a a new twist for restaurant use that we don't have in our current ordinance. So we're creating a definition and it's as simply as its beer is produced and bottled only for retail sale and consumption on premises. And brew pubs would be allowed by special permit in the RC one district. And they'd be allowed as a right in the RC two district. PDD one district, which is Suffolk Downs, PDD two district, which is Wonderland, Old Farm, Wonderland Dog Track, our general business district, our central business district, highway business district, TED district, industrial park district. So those districts would be would allow brew pubs. We also are adding an expanded definition to our current brewery, distillery, and winery use, which means a plant in which beer, wine, or other alcoholic beverage are produced and bottled for wholesale distribution. And this will include retail sale for consumption on premises or off premises. And brewery, distillery, and winery be allowed by special permit in the GB and central business district and would be allowed as a right, again, the RC two, which is waterfront square in the lower end of Revere Beach Boulevard, which is a mixed-use district. PDD one, which is Suffolk Downs, PDD two, which is Wonderland. And again, the highway business, which is Squire Road, TED district, which is Bell Circle and Lee Burbank Highway, and our industrial park district, which is basically where Showcase Center is now and the new Amazon wholesale distribution facility.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stringy. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Bob O'Brien?
I'll be very brief, Mr. President. Bob O'Brien, Ten Ocean Avenue in Revere, Director of Economic Development for the city. I fully support everything that Frank said. I will repeat it. I would, however, note, Mr. President, that if and when this zoning ordinance is passed, it will be responsive to your first request of me when I took this job. Why don't we have any brew pubs? So I'm very glad that it's finally come to this, as I'm sure you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak? I have an attendee raised hand as a proponent. We're gonna mute you. That's looks like it's Wayne?
Wayne Rose, 19 Thondike Street. I I totally support this. It's something I've been looking for for a long time, so this is one that I have to give credit to the mayor.
Thank you. Any other, any other proponents seeing and hearing none? We're going to close that side of the hearing. We open the side up to any opponents, any opponents wishing to speak? Looking in the audience, I don't see any hands raised. We're going to open it up to the city council. Reminder that this is this is in honor of Counsel Guanasso going to zoning subcommittee. Any councils wishing to speak? We'll put on the list. Going down, Counsel Janino, Guanasso, McKenna, Morabito, Novoselski?
Pass.
Counsel Novoselski?
I pass.
Pass. Okay, Powers, Sereno?
Yes. Mr. President, just just one quick comment. So last year, when I was running for office, one of the biggest things that I wanted to accomplish was to see programs or things in our city that will keep people of my generation, the millennials, in Revere and not going out of the city. And, you know, many, many friends go to night shift or up to Salem. And I just think it's great that we're allowing this to move forward so that way we can have something like that here in our community and we can stay in Revere. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sereno, Counsel Counsel Visconti, Counsel Zambudo. Okay, and of course, as mentioned, this is going to go to zoning and yes, I would be very much in favor, but I'm sure we'll have some more discussions on the details in zoning. And we're gonna move it on for zoning.
Okay, calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to install two jointly owned poles for reliability purposes on Salem Street, beginning at a point approximately 20 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Overlook Ridge Drive and Salem Street and continuing approximately 120 feet in west direction, rather requesting permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes.
Thank you. And we have someone from Verizon, Mr. Cordima. Hello, how are you?
Good evening, Counsel. I'm good. How's everybody there? Um, my name is Mike Cordima from National Grid Electric, 170 Metford Street, Walden. We're requesting to petition this for two inline poles. After you go past the Overlook Ridge entrance, we're going to set the poles in there, hang voltage regulators on the line to maintain good power. The the draw up at Overlook Ridge is it's a lot of drainage, so they want to make sure that the power is reliable going up. It feeds all the way up around Salem Street, all the way out to Lincoln Ave and Saugus. So we're going to hang equipment on each of those two plus one pole there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize. I was opening it up to proponents and of course, Michael Cordima would be a proponent from National Grid. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Any other proponents? I'm looking in the audience. Don't see any. We have one raised hand. It looks like we have, as a proponent, we have Nico. Nico, you are unmuted. Name and address for the record, please. Nico, if you're out there, you raised your hand. Okay. Name and address? No? Okay, any other proponents in the audience? Actually, Nico, can you hear me now? Okay. Any other proponents? No? We're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents in the audience? Any opponents in the audience wishing to speak? Any opponents? Okay, we're going to close that side of the hearing and open it up to counselors. Any counselors wishing to speak? We have, let's see, we have the counselors. We have Richard Counsel Sereno wishing to speak?
Yeah. Hi, Mike. How are you?
Hey, Counsel. Good. How about you?
Good, thank you. So I was looking at the rendering that you sent over. And I see here the pole is, the two poles you're looking to add are 3960 dash five and 3961 dash five. So does that mean that 3960, that is a double pole? Is are you planning on removing that double pole as part of this? Or are you going to leave that untouched and add the the two poles?
Well, right now, 3960, because it's a siphon pole into Overlook Ridge, it's probably going to take. Hello?
Hello?
Oh.
I got that. I'm muting it. So go ahead.
Yep, if it's a double pole, it it will.
No, 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 no.
So that's Moreno keeps on muting. Can you just make?
No, no, no.
Counsel McKenna, Ashley, we're going to remove them.
I'm sorry, Mike. Could you could you repeat that?
3960 is a riser siphon pole, so that'll take a little bit of time to convert over to get all the equipment done in in the right and correct order. The other two poles, well, as you can see, they'll just be consecutively. That's how we set the equipment in consecutive poles. Thank you.
Okay, I I just I have to be honest, I'm not too thrilled voting in support of giving you two more poles right there when on Salem Street, double poles have kind of been a thing that have been driving me crazy. And on Salem Street alone, from Linden Square, when you go up Lynn Street onto Salem Street, there are at least three double poles from Linden Square in Revere to the time you hit Saugus. And adding two more poles before we, you know, before we fix that issue, I I really have a huge problem.
Counsel Sereno?
Thank you.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Counsel Novoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mike. Mike, are these going to be breaking up any sidewalks? Are you going to be digging? up any sidewalks? Are you going to be digging, are you going to be digging any trenches to make the?
There'll be no trenches, but I'm sure they'll put a ground rod at the pole. If, I wish I had Google Earth up. I want to look at that. I know what you're talking about. If it's, they'll replace the sidewalk. If it's concrete panels, they'll replace the panels. We have civil department crews that do that. So everything will be done.
Because I know they have a habit of taking a very, very long time to do it, especially that I know in my neighborhood, I'm waiting over a year to get some panels repaired. So.
Are they from electric poles?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I can make a notation.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure that Council Sereno gets back what he, what was taken away.
Okay. Sidewalk, Mr. Richard. Thank you, Council.
Council Visconti, wish to speak?
Yes. Through you to Michael, I agree with Council Sereno, and was wondering, is there something that we can do to make sure that once that pole is in agree on, that once those two poles are installed, that we remove, that we can get a commitment from you guys that that's, that double pole is removed and not forgotten? Because that seems to be the case. And what I don't want to do is all of a sudden approve these two other poles and then that double pole and those double poles are just forgotten about and later have to be dealt with. So I'd like a commitment from you, okay, in National Grid, well, along with Verizon, that that's going to be taken care of.
I'll tell you what, I can, we're not in the office. I'll call my supervisors, my overhead foreman. I'll have them go out and check. A lot of times when a pole gets set, we will get off the top, especially with riser pole like 3960, and see if we're not on it, or if we are still on it. I'll have my foreman give me an evaluation of that. And maybe I can get ahold of Dan Cameron to report back to the city. But I'll have those poles that the council talked about, looked at. If, if we've already topped them and we're off, then it's, it comes down to Comcast and Verizon. But I will look into these poles, okay? And then right now, it's four, including three coming out of Linden Square, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. And we have, we have, just, I just want to go back to a couple attendees in the audience. We have a couple. Nico, you wish to speak? Let me unmute you real quick. Let's see. Nico, all right. Oh, there you go. Nico, you wish to speak?
Yes, yes, sir. Nico Kasopolis, 111 Mill Street.
Thank you.
And I guess this is for Mr. Cordima. I know you guys are asking for permission. You guys are always coming before the city, and we're constantly asking National Grid to fix the poles. So I'm echoing what Council Sereno said. There are more poles throughout the city that National Grid should take a look at and fix. So, you know, you guys are always constantly coming before the council. And I know when the council or the city tries to get some help from you guys, we're always, for some reason, we're not receiving that help. So I would hope that going forward, you guys, you know, are always asking us for something. We want something in return. Stop fixing these poles.
All right, thank you. And I understand, you know, certainly the councillors speak often about poles that needed to be done, but we want to stick, we want to just keep this to the public hearing at hand. And obviously, the councils will continue to, as we do on our monthly meeting, to discuss other poll-related issues. So if anything else is due to this specific public hearing, I know there's another hand raised, but we already went to the public hearing side. We're on the councillor's side. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Seeing, hearing none. Councillor, councillor, we could vote on this tonight, or we can put this into subcommittee. I know it's in Ward Six, and at the, at the, Council Sereno, I'm curious if you'd like to vote on this tonight?
We can, if we vote on it tonight, I would vote against it. But if we put it in committee and we can get a commitment from National Grid and Verizon that they'll, that they'll look into and that they'll actually do something about those three double poles, particularly on Salem.
I think it would be best to refer to Public Works Subcommittee.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered on the application of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation to 51 Causeway Street, Boston, requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for a repair garage and underground storage of flammable and combustible liquids totaling 4,322 gallons for use by the DCR maintenance facility located at 230 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Thank you. And we're going to open this up to proponents. We have, any proponents in the audience? I know we have Mr. Tempest and Paul Rupp wishing to speak. Any other proponents?
Paul, do you want to go first?
No, you go ahead, Simon.
Okay. My name is Simon Tempest. I'm the owner's project manager for the project, actually working for the city of Revere. I think a lot of the councillors know me. The project went through the whole permitting process. It went through site plan review. It's gone through review by the Deputy Chief Chiva. We've got all the approvals. The building is now finished, and we have a temporary certificate of occupancy for the building. The one outstanding item that we need is this license for the fueling facility. But as I said, it's been permitted, and this is the last piece of the puzzle.
Thank you. Mr. Rupp?
Just that this is a good project. It's turned out nicely. It's going to aid the maintenance and upkeep of the beach dramatically. And it's just a final step to take to, to get it all in line.
Thank you, Mr. Rupp. And just your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry. Yeah, Paul Rupp, 32 Humphrey Street, Swamp Scott.
Thank you very much. And any other proponents in the audience? We have Wayne, proponent?
Wayne Rose, 189 Coolidge Street. I mean, 19 Dawn Dyke Street. And I just have a, I have a question to the stoneman. I'm for this, but I just would like to know one question. If there is a leak somehow, how is this contained?
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Mr. Rupp or Tempest, would you like to answer?
Yes, I'll answer that. There's actually a spill pad, which is very similar to the spill pads that you see around a gas station. When you go in, there's a concrete pad which would hold the, the, any spillage. And then it is all taken to a separator, a gas separator, so none of it can go into the, into the drainage system. So that has been accounted for by the engineers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have another proponent in the audience. It's, I'm mute, that's Beck Haskins? I don't know what's going on with Beck. Okay. She's going in and out. Looks like she's no longer there. He or she is no longer there. And any, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Are there proponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing, we're going to close that side of the hearing. And any of the councillors wishing to speak? Council Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the project is down on the beach in my ward.
Oh, that's a fucking guy. His face.
Mr. President, can you mute that other person that's swearing?
Yep, I do.
Thank you. It's a beautiful building. They did a great job with it. Most of the equipment is gone for the construction, and there's still a fence around it. Are they going to be planting new grass down there?
Yes, there's, there's a whole landscaping plan. It's, it's just waiting on weather and backups and.
Okay. Other than that, it's a, it's a great building. And I think the DCR maintenance guys who do a great job taking care of the beach will enjoy their new facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Council Powers and then Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great building. It adds so much city. It's something that is certainly long overdue. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe we had a very strong investment into that building with DCR. So I think the sooner we get this approved, the better off the city will be. We'll have maintenance equipment down there constantly before, probably before it goes anywhere else, to Nahant, to East Boston, or anywhere like that. And our beach will be maintained as well it should be America's first public beach. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleagues stole my thunder. I was going to say it cost us $11 million. It's a beautiful building. It was part of the lawn projects that's gone on for some 14 or 15 years, acquiring the property. And this was part of it. It's a beautiful building. Let's finish it. Let's just approve this and get it over with and move on. It's, it's certainly a gem of a building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Council Giudino? No, you just fixed your glasses. Okay. Look good. All right, we're going to ask for a roll call vote on this tonight. Madam Clerk?
Tell the city council grant a Chapter 148 license for a repair garage and a broad ground storage of 4,322 gallons of flammable for use by the DCR maintenance facility at 230 Revere Beach Boulevard. Council Giudino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morbido?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted. Unfinished business, calendar item number eight, communication from the co-directors of the 2020 federal census to provide an update on the activities planned for Census Day, April 1st, 2020.
Would anyone like to speak on that? Any councils? No?
Diane Cola, and it was my understanding. Oh, hi, Council.
How you doing?
I'm doing well, thanks. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
It was my understanding that Bob Mara was going to write a letter to table this?
Yeah. So that's why I was going to, we were going to place it on file or table it.
Thank you.
Right? Because, thank you. Place on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Well, I may take a moment and take something out of order, if you could?
State your point.
I have, through you, Mr. President, to the elections clerk, commissioner, excuse me, Cola. And if you could, Diane, if you could enunciate the changes in the law regarding absentee ballots, I think people don't realize that if you belong to, correct me if I'm wrong, if you belong to a group that might be impacted by COVID-19 because of your health or otherwise, even though you may not be disabled, that the governor has, lacks the rules, as it said, shall I say, the Secretary of State has lax rules on the absentee ballot law at this point in obtaining it. In fact, it's on the Secretary of State's website, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so there was Senate Bill 2608. It allowed all eligible.
Actually, hang on, everyone. Hold on. Pardon me. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Cola. I understand you're here. Are you asking for us, Council Rotundo, are you asking for us to take up a later motion? Is that what you're asking?
I just want to, to.
I just want to make sure we're discussing a motion or not. You know, I don't want to just have rogue conversation.
There's no motion in the floor.
Okay. No, there's a motion later on about in regards to some, some mail-in ballot discussion. If that's the motion you wanted to take up, you know, I know it's.
I mean, I'm more than, I'm absolutely more than happy to do that, to be quite honest with you, if you want to suspend rules and take that motion up while she's present.
Sure. While, while, while Madam Diane Cola is up, Madam Clerk, can we take that motion up and then we'll go back to regular business? Madam Clerk?
Let's suspend the rules.
Suspension of rules, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm sorry, which was this councillor, which calendar item number?
This was Council Morbido and I was co-sponsor.
Got it. What number? What number? Where is that on the agenda?
30.
Number 30. Thank you.
Council number 30.
Calendar item number 30, motion presented by councillors Morbido and Keith, that the mayor requested to approve the attached resolution relative to vote by mail elections in the city of Revere due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, so first, I'd like to answer Council Rotundo's question. For all city local elections happening prior to June 30th, the Secretary of State's office enacted S2608, and it allowed all eligible voters taking precautions due to COVID-19 to qualify for an absentee ballot. It broadened the definition of disability for municipal elections, as I said, taking place before June 30th. So that was the first part of, I think I answered George's question. The second part was, if we wanted to have a meeting to discuss vote by mail, and what I would hope for is that my department going forward could concentrate on running the presidential election and implement a lot of the changes that are going to be coming regarding supplies being ordered. In state election years.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to repeat that. I couldn't hear it.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say is, I would prefer that my department concentrate on running the election and processing the work for the election, and then just wait for the direction from the Secretary of State's office, because there's only so much time and resources that we can spend. And if we start to have meetings, sometimes they take on a life of their own, and everyone has a different idea as to how we should run our election. But when you come right down to it, we may not have the staff, because there's only three of us, or the money to implement the ideas. And actually, in state election years, you have to follow the directions of the Secretary of State's office. Now, I did a little bit of research over the weekend, and what I did find was that there were two bills written by a Cynthia Stone cream. And basically, what she did was she implemented early voting for September elections. So that was one bill. And the point that I'm going to try to prove to you is that everyone is providing a lot of ideas to the Secretary of State's office, and there's so many, only so many ideas that they can entertain. The State House News Service, Pam Wilmont, she works for Common Cause. She wrote a letter to Speaker of House DeLeo, and in it, she outlined all of the information in a bill that was, hold on a second, Senate 2654, that was created by Ms. Roush and Mr. Madaro. Basically, many people have many ideas, and I have the faith of the Secretary of State's office that they will implement the right controls that need to be in place so that everyone gets to vote on Election Day without jeopardizing their health. In a Commonwealth magazine dated April 20th, it says right here, galvan back's early voting by mail for all elections.
So, Ms. Cola, I mean, first of all, I, no one, I just want, I just wanted to make sure that we're all heard here. Council Morbido has this motion. I'm also a co-sponsor. I would ask that Council Morbido speaks, but on top of it, no one here is looking to, certainly no one wants to waste anyone's time. You do a very good job. Your team works extremely hard. It's a very, you're extremely challenged, especially during elections. You've done a wonderful job for many years, and you will continue to do a wonderful job for many years to come.
Thank you.
I think this, the point, and I'm not going to put words in Council Morbido's mouth, was the, the reason for this motion was to look ahead at potential preparedness, because it is going to be something that's on the state's docket to potentially do. Whether they do it or not, it's not going to be up to us. We all know that. It's not going to be up to the Revere City Council. It's going to be up to the state. But we want to look at some sort of preparedness for the city. And I guess it was just raising the topic. So Council Morbido, I'm sure wishes to speak. And I believe Council Sereno is asking to be recused from this. Is that correct? I know those are revised. I apologize. But Council Morbido, feel free to state your point here.
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight, Diane Cola. So on any typical election year, I would not seek a discussion about preparedness of our local election. Obviously, this year isn't any typical. Obviously, this year isn't any typical year. The spread of the COVID-19 virus has caused businesses to operate differently. They've caused people to find new approaches for to their everyday life and their everyday routine. Obviously, an election isn't part of someone's everyday routine. So sometimes it's a last minute thought. So we wanna make sure we're taking everything into consideration. And I believe having a dialogue in a time where everyone's so cautious and their sets, their, they have heightened sensitivity to going in crowds or being around a lot of people. So I think this motion mainly was put in to have big dialogue and discussion and see what the election department thinks. Invite the Secretary of State representatives there. I think it's something we need to look at. This isn't a typical election year. And I think this motion was put in just to have dialogue.
Thank you, Counsel Morbeto. And this is gonna go to Legislative Affairs as well.
Can you hear me?
Correct, so.
Would it be possible for me, instead of having all of these people present, to just provide you with information as it comes down from the Secretary of State's office? I mean, I can tell you that we've already, I've already started looking to freestanding sneeze guards, I guess they're called, and they're the plastic petitions. So they between, you know, the poll worker and the voter. There's also these, these face shields. We've already started ordering masks and hand sanitizers for those that'll be at the polls. But I think it's gonna be a smaller crowd. Not only, it's gonna be less voters, but we'll have less poll workers approved as well. But I would prefer that if we have this kind of meeting, where whatever information the Secretary of State's office provides to me and implements, what rules and regulations, I can provide to the city council. Because
One thing we have to look at.
Sure.
What was that?
No, sure, I'm listening.
I figured in Legislative Affairs that we could, it would open up a lot of dialogue. I, it wasn't, the intention wasn't to have a dialogue here at the city council meeting. But that's why our subcommittees
Okay.
are there for. They're basically there for dialogue, to have some debate. And I think a lot of questions wanna be asked. For instance, do you think there won't be sufficient help? Should we consolidate polling locations? There's a lot of things to look at. And as much information you can send us would be appreciated as well. Thank you.
Okay, so would it be helpful if I use my, the campaign finance mailing list? And as the information becomes available, just send it to folks by email?
Yes.
Is that okay? Okay. And another thing I had was, I don't even know if I'm gonna be able to use all the polling locations that I currently use. I mean, the Lighthouse, Jack's sad house. So I mean, that's three polling locations right there. So that is, that would be a concern. That is a concern of mine.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
All right, Counsel Sereno, and then we'll go back to Counsel Rotundo. Counsel Sereno? Oh, no, I'm just, I'm recused from discussion on this. Is recused, thank you. Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you. No, I'm not. So, you know, my point is very simple. Obviously, I understand it's going to committee. But there is a lot of displeasure in the populace that have gotten phone calls. I'm sure you've gotten them. If you haven't, I'd be surprised. What I will tell you is that we have a very different set of circumstances than we had before. When we look at the numbers throughout the state, what we're seeing is that the horrific numbers that they were giving us are not what is actually transpired. And I'm thankful for that. Of the fifty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-two cases, there are thankfully and sadly, three thousand three deaths. And at this point, you know, we are talking a particular group. And I'm just talking about the numbers at this point of who needs to be protected if voting is to take place in a particular area. So I wanna give you the numbers so that you have this to digest, so that you actually know what the issue is. So people that are affected from the age of fifty-nine and less that have, unfortunately, have passed, that that number is less than
Counsel, can I interject? I do listen to all of the news service, you know, all the briefings at noon time and such. So number one, I'd like to say is I haven't gotten any calls of anyone expressing their dissatisfaction about the way elections are run. I do understand the severity of the COVID-19. I do understand there's gonna be a lot of issues for us to address. But right at this moment in time, I mean, I know that the Secretary of State's office is gonna have the polling places open with a less of a staff. So I understand, and I welcome your input. But I don't need the statistics quoted to me because I do know how terrible the virus is.
Well, first, let me, let me just kinda put this out there. First of all, I'm talking about people who are upset about the mailing as a voting process.
Right.
And what I'm trying to say is if we're going to vote in place, I wanna kinda give you an idea of the group that is at most risk.
But can I finish? Yeah, can I finish? I don't think, I think only those people that wanna go to the polls are gonna go to the polls. The rest of the people are gonna be able to vote by mail. The Secretary of State is working on it. Secretary Galvin said in the Commonwealth Magazine that he is for voting by mail. That's not the issue. And I, but you may have some
And I'm against, and I'm against that, as are other people.
Oh, you don't want voting by mail.
Unless it's done by an absentee ballot system, correct.
Everybody. I'm gonna put everyone on mute for a second. Hang on one second. Hold on, excuse me. Everybody, hang on. Everyone be quiet for a second. All right? I'm gonna refer this to Legislative Affairs. All right, we're not gonna argue all night and start dissecting what's going on in the world's health issues. Clearly, there's a lot going on, and there's no
First of all, you
Excuse me, I have the floor right now. Okay? We're not gonna, we're not gonna go, go into every, every little bit of the health of the, of the country over voting. And all of a sudden, all of a sudden, everyone's take is changing. A week ago, it was the worst thing in the world. All of a sudden, we talk about changing voting, and that's now, all of a sudden, it's not as severe. I'm not gonna have that conversation. We're gonna refer this to Legislative Affairs. We're not gonna have a back and forth all night long. Any other, all in favor of Legislative Affairs? Thank you.
So is that how you do this? You basically suspend rules? You try to take up an issue? We're not even three minutes That's fine. He's in a rush to finish the meeting.
That's fine. That's fine.
I am, I get muted all the time.
Same thing.
Subcommittees were made for dialogue and Okay, thank you. There shouldn't be any further debate on this at the city council meeting.
Referring it to
But forbid, because you do have it before the council.
Referring it to
Your motion.
Next.
Back to the regular order of business.
Back to regular order of business.
Councilor President Keith, point of personal privilege.
Counsel Gino.
Sorry, I've been trying to get your attention for a few minutes. I texted you. I just wanted to be recused from that, but I didn't wanna interrupt everything that was happening.
Thank you.
So Counsel Gino is recused from calendar item number thirty. Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening. We had two items before us. The first one was twenty dash zero eighty-seven, Bond Deli Corporation, ninety-five Squire Road, seeking permission via city council to reconstruct an unconforming use and structure for the purpose of renovating and expanding an existing car wash at ninety-five Squire Road. This, this was voted out unanimously and approved. And I would ask for a roll call vote on that.
Roll call?
Conditions of the site plant review committee. Sorry, city clerk.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner at ninety-five Squire Road, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counsel Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers? Where'd John go? Oh.
He's muted. There we go.
Counsel Powers? Yes. Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Okay, also twenty dash zero eight eight. Revere Bell LLC, two ninety-five Madison Ave, New York. Permission from the Revere City Council to permit the alteration of an unconforming structure, so the permit existing. This, without going into detail, this was a what amounts to a typographical error when the building was built, when it was recorded. And it's just a legal way of correcting it. So the city council listened to the proposal and voted unanimously to approve. Ask for
Roll call.
Roll call on the special permit. Shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner at forty-five Belle Isle Avenue, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counsel Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti? Yes, Counsel Zambudo? Yes, and Counsel President Keith? Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review. I'm sorry, that was my beagle, I apologize. Next item on the agenda is the appointment subcommittee report.
Mr. President?
Counsel Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the appointment subcommittee met. We had several names for reappointment and appointments with the drain layers license position. Now, item two zero dash one oh four, communication with the mayor relative to the appointment of Mike Materio Brothers as a licensed drain lab. Two zero one zero five, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Jay Durindo as a licensed drain lab. Two zero one oh six, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Sean Farrell as a licensed drain lab. Two zero one oh seven, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Diaz Construction as a licensed drain lab. Two zero one zero eight, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Palm Construction as a licensed drain lab. And two zero one oh nine, communication with the mayor relative to the appointment of the U X of A as a licensed drain lab. And also on the list is E.B. Rotandi and Sons. Is there any objections of any of the counselors that they'd like to take any individual out? I would like the council to take these all as one, if they so allow. Might, and they all were voted out favorably.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That concludes, Mr. President, the appointment subcommittee report.
Okay, next item on the agenda is calendar item number seventeen, communication from the mayor relative to a zoning ordinance establishing regulations for small smell, small cell wireless antennas.
The reading?
Yep. Counsel McKenna, I believe you had, you had something you wanted to discuss in this, Counsel McKenna?
Yes, I think the, on this ordinance, the ordinance that's just been presented by the city, I think it, it, it reads well, but I think there's some parts that we should add to it if it's going to zoning. The, the one part was, it says if it gets on eleven, it forgets its packet hundred, page a hundred on eleven, it forgets an area of critical concern, which is much, mush in conservation land. And that's on the F, that's on the federal guidelines of what the laws say. So they forget that on the proposal on eleven. And I do think we really need to work on this. Highly dense and popular neighborhoods should not be, should not be getting this in the neighborhoods like in Beachmont or Shirley Ave, which they proposed to be. And you all want to, Mr. President. A lot of them are coming. I think there was twenty-eight applicants. And, and they were coming. So I think we really need to look at each item, each number, and work a little bit on this ordinance. I think it's a good read. But I think, I think the fire, fire department had a lot to do with this. And I think we, we as counselors that are representing our residents should be involved in this too. We should change some of the verbiage. So, thank you.
I, I agree. I'm not sure if any other councils wish to speak, and then I'll save my comments at the end. This is gonna go to a public hearing. Any other councils?
Is there a committee it's gonna go to, Mr. President?
It's gonna go to a public hearing, and then it would go to committee after that. Or go, we could, we could, we could vote on it after that. So in the meantime, it's open up to a public hearing. But I know there's gonna be some recommendations, and Counsel McKenna brought a few up.
I agree with him.
Madam Clerk, so from the public hearing, would this be able to go to a committee?
Sure.
Yes, Counsel President. As with any zoning amendments or zoning application, it needs to go to committee for review. And the planning board also has to hold a public hearing on this matter.
Correct, so we're gonna refer this to public hearing on May eighteenth. And we can add in some of those revisions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Next item on the agenda is a communication from the city auditor relative to the capital improvement stabilization fund appropriation.
Hello.
Mr. Viskey?
Good evening, Richard Viskey, eighty-seven Harris Street. Before you have an order to appropriate some pay-as-you-go capital items from our capital in stabilization account. We currently have two point three million dollars in the CIP stabilization account. I did provide to you a summary document of the five-year capital plan, updated with with some detail there. And what we're trying to do here is do some of the, meaning from the stabilization fund for these items that we believe we can buy without having to issue some debt, which right now is pretty volatile market. Anyhow, the hope is to try to get this appropriation in place so that we can begin to stop planning for the two thousand twenty-one CIP. So I know there's a couple of department heads on here that can help answer any questions, and I can certainly do the same.
Thank you. Any councils have any questions on these appropriations? Counsel Visconti?
Just a couple of things I'd like to bring up. In terms of the, the IT equipment, is that desktops that we're purchasing? And was hoping somebody can elaborate on the infrastructure upgrades if need be, if that's possible.
Yeah, certainly. The equipment is, yes, definitely need to upgrade some of our desktop computers. Working currently with the new IT director to come up with a plan. But there's some long overdue computers and, and systems that are in need of upgrading. And infrastructure-wise, we actually, part of that money is to actually upgrade the way that the votes are reported in City Hall. We wanna get some digital boards up there for the elections department so that they're, they don't have to hang tapes on the wall anymore to look at the results of elections. We also wanted to get some video boards throughout We also wanted to get some video boards throughout City Hall just for some day-to-day communications with the residents and taxpayers. And yeah, just something that's been deferred too long that we're trying to now actively manage their council.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Any other councils? We can, we can vote on this tonight?
Roll call.
Should move. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Shall the city council approve the following appropriations from the capital improvement stabilization fund? Seventy-five thousand dollars for IT equipment? One hundred thousand dollars for IT infrastructure? Fifty thousand dollars for police vehicles? Hundred and twenty-five thousand for police equipment? Fifty thousand dollars for police maintenance? One hundred thousand dollars for fire equipment? Fifty thousand dollars for fire maintenance? Fifty thousand dollars for DPW vehicles? One hundred fifty thousand dollars for DPW equipment? Fifty thousand dollars for DPW equipment? Fifty thousand dollars for DPW equipment? Fifty thousand dollars for DPW maintenance? And one hundred thousand dollars for planning infrastructure? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Starino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved.
Next up?
Calendar item number nineteen, communication from the city auditor relative to free cash appropriations.
Hello, Richard Viskey, eighty-seven Harris Street. Again, this is somewhat capital-related item, but we do have one item on here. We have two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar appropriation request to cover the, the charges for single-stream recycling. I don't think it's any secret that that program has really been a budget bust lately. The cost of getting rid of the single-stream recycling has surpassed the amount it costs us just to get rid of regular, ordinary trash. And despite our best efforts, we continue to see a rise in that expense. So we're requesting two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to finish out the fiscal year on a positive balance. The other hundred thousand, the other million dollars is a request for seven hundred thousand dollars to supplement our chapter ninety roadway repairs and a separate three hundred thousand dollar item for sidewalk and small road repairs that will be made by the DPW superintendent with regard to three-eleven calls. There is a backlog of small side, trench work, other types of small repairs. So we thought it was, Michael Kessman and the administration and Paul thought it'd be best to try to split that appropriation in two piles and have two separate contracts because some of the three-eleven repairs require a quicker turnaround. So that, that was put out to bid with the idea that these repairs could be made more expeditiously than the larger grind-and-old and type roadway work that we want on a larger scale. So I know Paul's on the line to help me answer any questions on both recycling and three-eleven, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any councils wishing, any questions, Counsel Visconti?
I guess I have one question, obviously, on the recycling for two seventy-five. Is there a, I, I know the cost has gone out of control, like you said. Is there a plan in place that, or a plan in the future to try to minimize that cost that we're looking into? I know we did a, we received a grant, I think, last year in terms of educating our residents about recycling. I'm not sure how productive that was, but is there anything that we can do to reduce that, that cost? Because it is getting great.
Yes. Okay, Paul, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Paul Gensio, Superintendent of Public Works. Those are very good questions, Counsel Visconti. We've been struggling with this now for a couple of years, and there really isn't any end in sight. We did get a grant last year, and we did go out. We took twenty-five, thirty percent of the city, and we did some enforcement. And in the area that we hit, we've had some success trying to educate the public and not contaminate the recycling to the point that it's considered trash. We have been awarded the grant again for this summer, and we hope to get out and do another twenty-five, thirty percent of the city, a different area. Unfortunately, just the way the markets are now, it's a struggle. No one is interested in some of this recycling. And ones that are, it has to almost be pure, and the, and the plants that we have around the country and in the state just can't give these other countries, you know, what they're asking for. So we, we hope to, with this education and with these grants from DEP, to educate the public to the point that at least we're not paying the contaminated rate. The contaminated rate right now is a hundred and fifty dollars a ton. The amount of money to get rid of regular trash is about seventy-four dollars a ton. If we are able to educate the public to the point that they recycle correctly, we would be able to draw that number down significantly. And we are trying.
No, I, I, I know you are, Paul. And you're the, you do a great job. It's just, when you see the numbers soaring the way it does, it obviously becomes a concern, obviously, for a, a budget for our, and, you know, and where we're spending our money. I commend you on what, on the efforts that you're doing, and hopefully our residents will see that we're paying double for recycling than we do for regular trash. That's, when you think of that, that's amazing. That, that's just mind-blowing.
Yep, and it's all happened in the last year and a half, two years. Two years ago, we were getting rid of recycling for zero. And it's turned around very quickly.
Yep.
Thank you.
We have a person in the audience wishing to speak. It looks like Sherry? Sherry, we're gonna unmute you, Sherry?
That was by, that was by accident, I'm sorry.
Okay. So any other counselors?
Yes.
Counsel Novoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, these three things, or two major things beside the recycling is between the roadway and the sidewalk repairs. I know all of us have issues with that stuff, and I'm glad to see that we're utilizing some of our funding that we're getting back from the state to put back in the city right away, and people can see it. I mean, it's very important that we put this million dollars for the roadways and sidewalks aside, and we just take everything on the two seventy-five for the recycling for what it's, what it is now. Like Paul said, nothing we can really do about it. So I would be in favor of this program going through.
Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you. Paul, do we have a process in which we're thinking about community compost at this point and trying to get to a zero point of trash? That's probably the, the most difficult, but it's done in other communities. And more importantly, we're going to end up spending probably three times as much on trash over the next five years, based upon several factors that I won't even get into because it's a little bit lengthy. And as you pointed out, people are not buying the various forms of recycle because of contamination. So my, my thought is, at what point do we ask, you know, getting people to go in the community, our, our businesses and so forth, to go to recycle too, product in certain areas? More importantly, community compost, because that takes out a significant weight, and then also looking at other ways of dealing with weighted products.
Sure. We have been working closely with the DEP. There's, there's a lot of ideas out there as to what to do. Some communities are entering into a composting facility. Right now, they're mostly the rural communities, the smaller places, the places out in the western part of the state. It's hard for a community of our size to enter into something like that. You need quite an area of land to set up a facility such as you're referring to. There are cities out there, such as Gloucester, that are getting back into recycling food waste. Those places, but those ideas mainly being tried out in the rural communities, and we hope to look at that. And, you know, hopefully at some point, we are able to bring it to a city of this size.
Thank you.
And the, the reason being is, when you take a look at the world economic system and what's going on, a lot of the things that we have taken for granted in the past are not going to be there in the future. And more importantly, you're going to start seeing different corporations evaporate that we would be able to go to at a macro level for trash, and it's gonna kind of affect us at the bottom. And I got family and friends in New Jersey as well, out in Illinois, and they're seeing some of those issues. But the, the question is, at what point do we realize a need for a community compost? The other thing is, is I'm sure in the future, this is going to arrive, and we're gonna have to find a place. And it might not be seen right now. People might not see it right now, but it will happen.
Yep, no, it's a very valid point, and it, it could be something that we enter into in the future.
And if you remember, it was me who brought the recycle bank to Revere Ward Four, and with the support of Tom Ambrosino. And so I, I just, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Any other counselors? I don't see any. We can roll call, vote on this. Madam Clerk?
Roll call on the motion. Oh, I'm sorry?
Did you fall asleep on us?
Uh, no, I was reading an email, and then I had to find the unmute button, but I'm back. Shall the city council approve the following appropriations from free cash? Seven hundred thousand dollars for broadway, for roadway infrastructure? Three hundred thousand dollars for three-one-one sidewalk, crosswalk, roadway repair requests? And two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for recycling services? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Starino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriations have been approved. Calendar item number twenty, communication from the city auditor pertaining to the certified retained earnings certification for the Water and Soil Enterprise Fund.
Mr. Viskey?
Thank you, Richard Viskey, eighty-seven Harris Street. Hello. So this is a new addition that we have made to the capital improvement plan. We decided that General Fund has a nice capital improvement plan, and we know Water and Soil does a lot of work, but we've never organized it in a way that kind of spells out how it would look over a five-year stretch. So this is our first year putting that together, and with the help of Don Charamella and Cory O'Hara and Joe Lake and that crew, we've sat down and made a list of every thing that we've been doing in Water and Soil, whether it's through the State Revolving Fund or through MWRA, some of the INI repairs we've been doing, et cetera. And so this will be the first year you've seen this spreadsheet laid out. And what we thought we would try to do is fund some of the pay-as-you-go capital for my certified retained earnings. Certified earnings are basically the free cash in the Water and Soil Department. We had three point, three million dollars certified, here above three million certified. Starting this fiscal year, we did put four hundred fifty thousand into our stabilization account, which leaves us with about two and a half million dollars in our retained earnings. And again, you know, with the, with the budget the way it is and tightening up these operating budgets, we thought we had a good opportunity here to buy some much-needed equipment and, and fix some fire hydrants throughout the city that, that Donnie can probably tell you more about. And so the request here is to use the retained earnings one time, the pay-as-we-go on the listed items on the order. And I know Donnie's on the line here, happy to talk about it, as am I. So that's what we have here.
Thank you. Mr. Charamella?
Yes, well, can I, can I answer any questions about anything that pops out at anybody?
No, I just, obviously, I, I do have a question. If any other councils have questions, I'll, I'll heed to them. Okay, so obviously, this is gonna be done before the end of the fiscal, this fiscal year. You know, my, my curiosity is, is knowing going into next year, there, there's gonna be some, obviously, with the shutdown of the economy, there's gonna be some serious fiscal constraints. Is this gonna get you through? Because I have a feeling we're gonna be very lean next year. Is this gonna get you through the next fourteen months?
Absolutely. So the equipment that I've asked for is equipment that's, that's solely needed. You know, we, we're doing a lot of work in the street now, and I mean, it's pretty, we're pretty visible. You can see us everywhere, you know, either managing breaks or just do regular PNM or maintenance work on the infrastructure in the city. But we also do our own, we, we also do our own projects in-house now. We do a lot of drainage projects in-house, some soar upgrades in-house, and we have planned water upgrades that we're gonna be doing in-house with small areas like the Agyle, Elleton, York, Beverly Street areas. So, you know, I think that it's the, you know, what, what we're asking for is just pretty much the tools that we need to, to do our work. And, and if you look at some of the, the projects we have slated for the next five years, they're all projects that counselors and residents have come to me with the last two years. And I think I'm trying to spread it across the city and, and try to address big drainage issue projects that have been a concern of, of the residents during some of the, during some of the flooding, you know, events that we've had.
Thank you, Mr. Charamella.
I may add, Counselor, a lot of these expenditures of in-house equipment and repairs, that goes towards planning for a lean twenty-twenty-one budget. We've done a good job at really weaning ourselves off a lot of the vendors that we've used in the past to do soil line cleaning, catch basin repairs, et cetera. So we have a pretty good-sized staff over here at Water and Soil that really getting into more of the operation and maintenance, as Donnie said. But again, to the extent that we can keep a lot of this work in-house with the proper equipment, we do actually save money in the long run.
Thank you. And, and yeah, and that's really the biggest point is I know that, you know, we're coming up on a, a budget season and I can, and we all know the expectation for the next fiscal cycle is going to be a little bit more tight. So I just wanted to make sure that they're going to have what they need to hopefully power through the next, you know, 12, 14, 16 months. And then hopefully we can get back to some sort of normals. Thank you. Any que, any other questions? We're going to roll call on that, Madam Clerk?
Now, the city council approved the following appropriations from water and sewer free cash. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars for water sewer infrastructure and six hundred fifty five thousand dollars for water sewer equipment. Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoseltsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yeah.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriations have been approved.
Counsel Keith.
Counsel Rotundo.
I sent the text message.
Yep. Well, so I know, so we're going to be going on to motions. Counsel Rotundo has a few motions that were already, I believe they were fairly answered, correct? Counsel Rotundo? So his counsel Rotundo is asked to hold off on some of his motions till the following meeting. And I know that he's pulled a few of his motions through you, Madam Clerk. Okay?
So calendar items number 23 through 27 have been requested to be withdrawn by Counsel Rotundo.
Okay. And then he's asked to, please hold my motions, the following motions.
Okay.
Okay?
Noted. Thank you. Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counsel Morabito. The mayor requests the hearings officer to dismiss any parking violations issued near a healthcare facility to any healthcare worker.
Counsel Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we can all agree that we're all appreciative of our healthcare workers. And I think we want to support our healthcare workers no matter however so we do. And I think this is the perfect way of thanking our healthcare workers by not, by having them wave, having the hearing officer wave any parking violations.
And any other councilors on that? Counsel Sorino. Okay, Counsel Sorino. Counsel Morabito, I think this is a great motion. I was just wondering. I know, I know the intent is for healthcare workers who are working at a healthcare facility. But would it be possible, would you be willing to amend it to include visiting nurses who are going into people's houses as well?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, visiting nurses are, you know, they're out and about in our community seeing patients. And I think, you know, if giving them parking tickets would, would be pretty bad. So if we could include them too, thank you.
I, I see no problem with that. Honestly, these are trying times for healthcare workers and they're working long hours. That's the least we can do any healthcare worker. That's the best way we can thank them if they have, get any kind of violation.
Counsel Genino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Morabito, I just want to commend you on this motion. It's a great motion. I wholeheartedly support it. And I think in times like this, it's small gestures like that that make a really big difference. So kudos.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Visconti?
Through you to Counselor Morabito. While I'm in support of the, the motion, and I think it's a good motion. My question is, I thought the parking department has eased up on parking violations, which is a, a little concerning. And wasn't sure if you know firsthand that they're getting tickets that we're not aware of? Or is it just parking? Because I was told that they're only ticketing, for the most part, any safety violations, meaning hydrants, anything regarding to safety. And I would hope that I, while I, while I, I commend our first responders and our, our our nurses that are fighting this on the front line, I'm hoping that they're not parking in front of hydrants and, and, and causing a problem in that aspect. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, in terms of parking tickets, I, I wasn't sure that they were giving them out. I thought it was only commercial overnight as well as any safety violation. So
I understand.
I'm just not aware of that.
I, I believe that's the case. I mean, Counsel Morabito, I think you would agree. Certainly, we would, we still wouldn't, we wouldn't want to encourage anyone to park and, and cause any safety.
Correct. It's not encouraging. It's more of a gesture, as Counsel Genino mentioned earlier. It's more of a gesture on behalf of the council to waive any parking violations for healthcare workers in our city.
Wonderful. And we have a council, we have a resident that wishes to speak. I'm going to unmute that person. That's, looks like Ralph DeChico.
Thank you. I just have one, one point of information that I've been fielding some emails, believe it or not, from some disabled residents that they're having some issues with people parking, especially one of the main spots is Target. They're parking in the handicap lots, especially some of the, the, the mobility vans. And they're, they're parking in the handicapped spots and staying there for their breaks and going wherever. So I don't know if that has been part of the parking department not enforcing. But I've been getting a lot of, a lot of emails and calls from some residents that, you know, seniors that are disabled, that those spots are, are getting taken up by non-handicap parking people.
So I'll, I'll speak to that. I know the parking enforcement is, has, has let, loosened up a little bit, but by no means are they loosening up to the point where they're ignoring any handicap or safety violations. They're still out there. They're still making sure that the city streets are safe. Obviously, people are taking advantage, trying to take advantage of the system. That's not due to the parking department. That's just people being ignorant and, and we'll, we'll make sure that they know to pat, patrol those parking lots a little bit more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors on the motion? On the motion as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Keith that the mayor be requested to extend tax, water and excise tax payment due dates by 30 days and waive any late fees within the 30 day grace period.
I'm just going to file, we're going to ask to file this motion. It looks like the city has already done, done just that. They've extended tax and they have to extend the tax payments. So we appreciate the city doing that to help the residents. Just place it on file, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the next motion, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27. Counsel Rotundo has asked to remove the email to Madam Clerk. And then we have motion 28. Madam Clerk?
Sure. Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Counselor Novoseltsky that the mayor instruct the Department of Community Development to replace concrete sidewalk on Cove Street on the south side from North Shore Road to Garfield Ave. Current concrete sidewalk is deteriorating, which is causing havoc with the neighbors. This has been requested twice through 311 and both times it was closed by someone.
Mr. President?
Mr. Counsel Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this has already been addressed. It's already in the hands of community development. And somehow without, somewhere in 311, they kept referring it to a different department. So it's in the hands of community development now. So we can withdraw this if you may.
Okay. And just on top of it, I know there's a resident, Eric Lampadecchio, sent the letter to the clerk on this and we'd like to just place his comments on file as well. Okay? Place this motion on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Calendar item number 29, motion presented by Counselor Novoseltsky that the mayor instruct the superintendent of public works to have the highway department repair the trench on Walnut Ave at the driveway of 117 Franklin Ave. This was first requested back on June 26, 19. This was also reported through 311, bounced around to several departments and then closed again in January.
Okay, Counsel Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a point of frustration on my part. Having seen the history of the 311 on this particular request is, to me, unconscionable and just totally uncalled for. It should have been taken care of. It's a simple water trench that has fallen apart over the last couple of years. And like it says that since last June, I've been requesting this to be done. And now I just have to go through us and have it come to the mayor and do my thing. I, I try to work with them and it just keeps getting deleted and canceled. And so I had to come through the council on this point.
Understood. I, I hear your frustration. Everyone else, any other comments on that? We refer this to the 311 office and the mayor's office, all in favor? Thank you.
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of reducing water and sewer bills by 5% for all ratepayers.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as we've been quarantined for a month, and I mean, I'm by myself, but I know there are families of five, six, seven. They've been taking a lot of showers, doing a lot of laundry, washing dishes. And with our high rates, water rates and sewer rates, I just felt that it would be really a good gesture to maybe reduce one water bill or two water bills, whatever it is during the coronavirus and discount some of these, discount all the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councilors wish to speak? Counselor Sorino, then Counsel Visconti. Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend Counselor McKenna. I think this is a great motion. Obviously, we do have some of the highest water and sewer rates in the region. And given that we are all staying home, it, it would be a really good gesture if we could, if, if it's feasible, if we can do it. I think it would be great. I think the residents and taxpayers would appreciate it. So, good job, Counsel. Counsel, Counsel Visconti?
I, I, I think it's a great motion, Counsel McKenna. But the other side of me, and while I would benefit tremendously from, you know, having six people at my house 24/7, I, I also, the, the, the accounting side of me is wondering whether or not the city could afford something like that. And not knowing what that number would be, I would be a little cautious going into some lean, you know, budget season. I don't know if that's something that we can absorb. And, and, and I'd like to hear from Counselor Richard Viskay, as well as the mayor on it. While I would love that, and, and I think it's a great motion, I don't know if it's feasible. Is it actual feasible? You know, is it actually feasible to, to get done? And that's my concern. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel. Good point. Counsel Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I would ask for a friendly amendment. I, I think it's a great motion. But I, I would ask to get a, an analysis of feasibility.
Counsel Guanasso, you've been quiet over there. We'll go to Counsel Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I agree with this, but we're going to catch 22. I agree with Counsel Visconti on his view on it financially. But on the motion, it says for all taxpayers, taxpayers at 5%. Now, you mentioned, Counsel McKenna mentioned for a couple of months. And I'd like to look into that rather than have the whole year and revise the motion to say a few months rather than the whole year, based on how our financial reports were. But feasibility is, is the main thing on this thing. So I think we have to look at it. It's a great idea. I, you know, I look forward to see all my constituents and homeowners get 5% all year round. But again, we may not be able to afford it.
Thank you. Counsel Guanasso, you can speak.
Mr. President. Mr. President, is Ira through?
Your case of dears waiting for you.
This ought to go to Ways and Means certainly for review. And I noticed in one of the council's comments, they said that we're taking showers now. I mean, in good weather, they don't take showers? I'm kind of concerned about that. A 5% reduction is, is a big hit financially. And I don't know at a particular time where the city's experiencing sharp falls in, in driving revenue. I think this ought to go to Ways and Means.
Thank you. And, and we have, it looks like we have an attendee looking to speak. We have
Really?
Mr. DeChico? Hold on, let me unmute you.
Hi, sorry, sorry if I keep commenting, but I'm getting, I'm getting questions again from the disabled residents. But I'd ask for a friendly, possibly a friendly, friendly amendment is, can a letter be sent to our state delegation to press this point with the M W R A? It seems like the government is, is, is putting, trying to put, put things on for, for reducing things for everybody else. So why can't the delegation go to the M W R A and ask for a decreases sense? Revere is one of the highest tax paying for water and sewer.
Good point, Mr. DeChico. Appreciate your input. And we have the man who writes the checks, Richard Viskay. He'd like to speak on that.
Yes, just want to let you know, I, I did have a conversation with some of the finance people at the M W R A. And Nick Reichstrom actually related this to me before that conversation. But the M W R A is actually looking to defer debt payments officially at 2021. And that vote, I believe, is going to come before them on June 5th. If they do that, that would relieve a million dollars from what we need for the 2021 budget for water and sewer. So in that respect, there may be some relief. As you know, we've also appropriated $2 million the last two fiscal years to bring relief to the water and sewer payers. Not sure if that's a possibility in this third year here, but as we work on the budget, we are definitely cognizant of the troubles everyone's having paying their bills, the, the commoner revenue. And when they passed all these laws on deferral of interest and delaying tax payments, it was absent any language on water. So at this point, there's no relief as far as national law goes. As you know, we, we follow national laws. That's basically what our jobs are prescribed on. So right now, there's no legal ability to do that with water and sewer rates. But there are things going on behind the scenes to try to bring that relief. So I'll keep you posted as I get more info.
Thank you, Mr. Viskay. It looks like Counsel Sorino, you have your hand raised, your virtual hand? No? Okay. Take your virtual hand down. All right.
That would be that you chose not to.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to, everyone's going to have a GoFundMe for Counsel Morabito's wifi.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess that we could, we could refer this to Ways and Means and we could discuss it further. I would be in agreement because I'm in the, you know, like, much like Counsel Visconti mentioned, you know, on the merit, I'd love to lower everyone's rates. I'd love to lower everyone's taxes. It would be, if it was that easy, a way, a magic wand. But the fact and the truth is, is we're going to be, you know, you're going to start seeing it in next year's budget. It's going to, it's, you know, stop preparing yourselves. It's going to be a big financial squeeze for the city of Revere, for the entire United States when it comes to financial planning. So be prepared. But off to Ways and Means. All in favor?
Calendar item number 32 is a motion by Counsel Rotundo. I believe he requested to have this motion tabled as he had to leave the meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
So we're going to, we're going to hold this till the next meeting.
And the same with calendar item number 33. That was another motion by Counsel Rotundo.
Number 34?
Calendar item number 34, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor request National Grid Gas and Electric in response to the COVID-19 pandemic to provide a discount to all ratepayers in the city of Revere.
She has such a big heart.
You're on a roll, kid.
Counsel McKenna, please. I'm mute. I'm mute.
I'm mute.
Wait a minute.
No, you're done.
Oh.
You're off. You're good.
Okay. So the only reason why I brought this up is because my sister lives in Florida. And the gas company and the electrical company are giving them, I think, a 55% discount during the virus. So I was just wondering, I mean, National Grid covers a lot of Massachusetts. They make a lot of money. And I feel, I felt since we're using a lot of electricity and gas, maybe they could give us a discount. So that's, you know, I'm hearing that all these power companies are giving discounts out all over the United States. So why not us? Thank you.
We can certainly ask the question. Counsel Sorino? I was just going to, I was just going to say through you, Mr. President, Counsel McKenna, another great motion. I have no problem with our body shaking National Grid's tree. I wouldn't hold my breath with them, but I, I, I think it would be a great ask. And, you know, hopefully they, they would consider it. But again, a good motion.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilors?
I, I I echo the sentiment here on this one. You know, I, I, I hope we have some luck with this because I'd love to tie it in half. Let me tie it along with some of my colleagues and some of the residents in Revere. So great motion. I hope we have luck with it. I don't know, but I wholeheartedly.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Counsel. All in favor?
Aye. All sorted.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Counsel Guanasso that the mayor request the police department to make review of all construction taking place on Sundays and to ensure that sites are and to ensure that sites are not in violation of the building permit, which does not allow for construction being conducted on a Sunday.
Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, to add incel to injury, the particular violation that I'm referring to happened on Easter Sunday, April 12th. That's the highest holiday in the Christian faith. And to have a full crew out there working right in the heart of our city, right on American Legion Highway, is an incel to eat me, to you, and every resident in our community. I just don't see the, the brazenness of this type of company going forward and creating this kind of activity on a Sunday. That's blatant to our rules of order. Number one, I don't believe there's any building permits that issue that construction crews can work on Sunday. If the regular homeowner can't work on Sunday and get a permit to work on a Sunday, why should they? So I, and I, what I did, as soon as I found out the very next day of this occurrence, I notified the mayor and I notified the building inspector. And so I just wanted people to be, to be put unnoticed as this type of thing occurring. And it should never happen in our city again. And, and I wanted to bring it to the attention of not only the city council, the whole, but the community as well. Because I did get several, several calls thereafter in reference to this. And they were outraged. They didn't think it was a problem. And it's only feet away from a church. That incel to injury. So I don't know how and when or why they did it. It was a poor thing in judgment. And I, I just wanted corrected in spite.
Thank you, Counselor. And it looks like we have an attendee wishing to speak. We're gonna unmute Sherry. I believe that's Wayne.
Yes, Wayne Rose, 19 Thondike Street. Arthur, I couldn't agree with you more. This was a blatant disregard for any bylaws we have in this city. I, I thought it was disgusting to see a full crew out there on Easter Sunday. I just want to know, I support you 100% buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, I don't want to, we all do respect Easter Sunday would be the, probably the worst time to work on a construction site. However, it is not illegal to work on Sundays. It's illegal to use heavy equipment. It's not, it's not illegal to be doing construction work. Now, some of the contractors that I've spoken to have told me that they're, they're, they're working on Sundays, especially now during the COVID-19 because it, it gives them an opportunity to do social distancing and still get some work done with that extra day. So now I'm not going to try to defend anybody who work on an Easter Sunday, but this was a different Easter Sunday. None of us could go to church. And it was, it was not a normal Easter Sunday. But it is not illegal to work on Sundays. And so I just wanted to make that pretty clear. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Mr. President.
Counsel Guanasso?
Mr. President, if that's the case, then I think we got to go back to our ordinances because there's something radically wrong with our, and I've been on the city council for 32 years. Some people think it's too much and too long. I have never seen crews working on a Sunday. Whether it's out of respect, or whatever it is, I've never seen a crew working on a Sunday. You do see homeowners individually maybe doing a little repair on their property. But never a major construction outfit working on a Sunday. And so if in fact it's legal, then we have to make it illegal because it's not right.
Good point. And, you know, and if I can speak on this, I'm not sure Chief Guido just jumped in. You're looking, sure if you're looking to speak, Chief Guido?
Mr. President, just to make it clear, construction companies can only work on a Sunday with permission from the police chief and the building inspector.
Absolutely.
Emergency situation, a unique situation. And I don't think COVID-19 would count for that. People deserve to have a day of peace. And I would suggest any of the councils, if this goes on in the future, just call the station and we'll immediately respond.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So, and I think Counsel Guanasso, I think we all get your point. And I, and I certainly don't disagree with you. You know, this is another reason why, you know, I think the entire council, councils ask for more enforcement, more inspectors to work the off-hours. Because as you know, the people that are doing this, you know, especially, especially the, you know, the areas on Sundays and nights and weekends, they know that there's no inspectors out. So that you know, they're able to do it with, you know, no recourse. So I would suggest again, if we're looking at an inspectional services department to beef it up on the off-hours, that goes for all sorts of enforcement. All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 36 was a motion by Counsel Rotundo. He also requested that be tabled.
Same with 37 as well.
Oh, and 37? Okay.
He asked me to have all of his motions tabled.
Calendar item number 38, motion presented by Counsel Serena and Visconti that the city council request representatives from Comcast, National Grid, Verizon, and RCN to appear before the city council in the month of May to discuss and provide updates from requests made by members of the council at the February 10th meeting of the Rivera City Council involving double poles, trench work, and wiring.
Counsel Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it pretty much speaks for itself. And I kind of touched on it earlier this evening. You know, I, I know we're in a very unique time period right now with COVID-19. However, there was a month before when, when all this started with COVID, from the time that National Grid, Verizon, Comcast were before us in February. And between February and March, I have to be honest, I didn't see much difference. Or I didn't see them addressing many of the concerns that I brought forward. In fact, now, you know, now that I'm home, I'm, I'm walking almost every night around the neighborhood. And walking down Malden Street, it drives me nuts to see wires that are wrapped around poles. There's a double pole on Washington Avenue, right at the intersection of Sergeant Street. That's really dangerous. At least it appears very dangerous. So it would be good to bring, bring these guys and ladies back as soon as possible in the month of May to hold them to account and to ask, you know, what they've done since February to address the concerns that we've had. So thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Serena, Counsel Visconti. And then we'll go to the rest of the councils.
I, I think he, he explained it excellent. I, I, I couldn't do a better job. I think it's a you know, these, these companies aren't doing what they say they were going to do. And you know, like you said, we had a representative come before us asking for stuff. And now they're asking for it. And we'd like to see some work done in our city. And there are a lot of double poles. There's wires wrapped around these poles. It's just an eyesore. It's dangerous. I think it should get cleaned up.
Thank you. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I had a problem with this, I think, two meetings ago, two months ago. And I asked Verizon, the Verizon representative Stanley and the Comcast representative, I forgot her name.
Angela.
Angela. To address Ward 1. And I asked them to promise. And I have to say that every single wire, I had 28 poles that had wires wrapped around them. They've been all done. So I have to give, I have to give credit where credit's due. They have come forth Comcast and Verizon, and they've fixed every single pole.
Thank you. Counsel?
Ward 6, I guess.
Yeah. Hey, you know, the squeaky wheel gets, gets the grease. Counsel Novoselfski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I agree with Counsel McKenna and good for her that she got all that stuff done. And I'm starting to see it a lot down in my neighborhoods. And one of the biggest culprit that we haven't met yet was RCN.
Yes.
And they should be ashamed of themselves.
Yes.
I'm getting complaints, not only about the poles and the wires, but about the way some of our seniors were treated when they were reaching out to get new customers. And they never followed up with any of their credit cards, not credit cards, but the gift cards that they were promised. And people would, made them take it out. And they left everything there and made them take stuff back. And it's just crazy. And RCN, again, should be ashamed of themselves. National Grid and Verizon, we all, unfortunately, we take them with a grain of salt. But I think we ought to bust them more because we did that a couple of years ago when we stopped them from digging. And, you know, on our streets. And I ought to think, we ought to think about it again. And stop all their permits and tell them to get on their horse. So I'm tired of it. And I agree with everybody involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morabito?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Any Wi-Fi connectivity issues? In my years on the council, so many councils have made this motion for them to discuss double poles. But the wiring seems to be a new issue. And it seems to be a lack of communication between National Grid, Verizon, RCNs. They're cutting the wires, just leaving them there. So this is something they definitely need to get on top of. Their communication is way off. No one's communication, communicating with one another. And I believe we used to get an email with a list of double poles that they would remove, what's lit, what they removed and what's current. And I haven't received that in probably about a year. So that's something we would want to look at when they come in as well.
Counsel Guanasso?
It seems like the utilities are using and outsourcing their work. Because I see a lot of trucks with New Hampshire plates on it. And they're exactly doing that. They're wrapping the poles. And they do it in several occasions. So I think it's the companies that they hire. You know, obviously, they're going to be the nature of the beast. They'll, they'll do as little as possible, no, no supervision over them. If nobody says anything about it, then they won't get involved with it. So now that we're making this outcry, and I'm glad to hear that Counsel McKenna is getting some progress in Ward 1, I think that the rest of us should join in and get it for the rest of the community.
Thank you. Any other councils wishing to speak? Counsel Serena?
I, Mr. President, through you to Madam Clerk, I just had a quick question. I know we had invited RCN back in February and they didn't come. Did the representative from RCN not come because of a scheduling conflict? Or is there a way to compel them if they, if they're not, you know, if they're not willingly coming?
I would suggest to maybe compel them further that the mayor invite them to speak at the city council meeting. I do send the invitation to RCN. I actually received no response from them.
Oh, that's great. Could we, would there be a way to amend the motion? Or is there a way that we can reach out to the mayor and ask that the mayor's office send the request directly to RCN?
Yeah. So what, what you just said, just have it as an amended motion that the mayor, not the city council, invite these entities up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counsel Novoselfski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one thing. And I don't know if it's legal or not, or what the situation is. But I don't know what kind of permit RCN has to be working in the city. I know there's a contract or something. But there has to be a probable cause type section in there that would allow us to withdraw their permit from doing any more work in the city and see how they react to that.
Good point. And we have an attendee. It looks like, I'm gonna unmute Sher, Wayne. Is that Wayne again?
Wayne Rose, 19 Thondike Street. I couldn't agree more with Ira to shut these people down. This has been going on for two years now. We have poles that are cut. We have holes in the ground next to the poles. We got piles of dirt next to them. It's going on all over the city. Something needs to be done about it. Two years is long enough, guys.
Yep. Thank you. Point. Thank you. So this is gonna get sent, we're gonna ask the mayor also request RCN to actually attend. They, they just have seemingly ignored us. I'm glad I never switched to RCN. And maybe they go on Counsel McKenna's naughty list. All right. All in favor with the amendments made?
Aye.
Aye.
All so ordered.
Calendar item number 39, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor be requested to purchase two banners and install at appropriate locations to show support for the senior class of 2020. The banners will read Rivera loves and supports our 2020 senior class. Hashtag senior class, hashtag class of 2020 strong. Further, that local businesses with digital signs be requested to flash a message of support for the 2020 senior class.
Counsel McKenna, great motion.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to just say something about it, Mr. President.
Yes, you have counsel.
Excuse me?
Yes, absolutely.
So the parents reached out, reached out to me because the class was not able to hold any events. So they asked me if I would ask the, the council, if they would rally around, in the city to rally around the RHS seniors and show this, show our support by obtaining a couple of banners. And I just want to challenge local businesses with digital signs and billboards to do the same.
Great motion, Counsel McKenna. Looks like Counsel Serena wishes to speak?
I was just gonna commend the maker of the motion. Obviously, we, you know, our, our hearts are with our Rivera High seniors. It's a very difficult time, I'm sure, for them. I can't imagine having my senior year ripped from me the way they did. So I think this is a great motion. I also wanted to mention former class presidents and class officers of Rivera High School classes that have recently graduated. They started a GoFundMe for the class. So that's on, on all forms of social media, if anybody wanted to contribute to that. I believe they're raising money to put toward holding events at a later date because their class fundraisers got canceled and whatnot. So anybody who can and wants to, please, please do so.
Great. Counsel Morabito?
Sorry, I was distracted. Counsel McKenna, great motion. Some suggestions on where we could put it. We should put in the banners if the mayor approves it. We should put them on the entry points and exit points of the city, like Linway, like right before 1A. When you're entering from Saugus, Everett, and then Chelsea. But yeah, I think this is a great motion. Most, most of the seniors basically got robbed because of the coronavirus. And it's just too sad. They're missing on, missing their most precious moments, you know? Senior prom and so many more things in their graduation. So thank you for putting that motion.
I had spoken to the mayor before this motion. And it's a great motion. And I know that we're gonna have more discussion. But there was some conversation, I think, with Diane Kelly and the school department, looking at the there's actually probably more seniors than there, than there are street poles on Broadway. So there would have to be some sort of an extension, maybe down Shirley Ave. Maybe down some of the ma, ma, major through, through ways. But that would be one of the ideas. Counsel McKenna, did you have something else?
Yes, I just want to add to that. The parents would, said that they would like something like in City Hall, across from City Hall, and then another designated place. But we are, the parents and I and Diane Kelly and some of the class advisors and the students, we are trying to plan a graduation in August. So we don't know where it's gonna go. But it's gonna be a distancing graduation. And it's gonna be held at the stadium. But like I said, we don't know what's gonna happen. So this is just in the, in the works, it's talk. But this, it could happen, who knows? So I just wanted to extend that knowledge to everybody.
Rolling rally graduation heard. All in favor?
Aye.
All so ordered.
Thank you, Ricky, for being my best friend.
Of course. Love you, Joanne.
Madam Clerk?
Oh, thank you.
Joanne, I thought I was your best friend.
Not anymore.
We still have business.
I was gonna say, calendar item number 40, presented by Counsel Keefe, that the mayor establish a Rivera COVID-19 relief fund so that the city can accept donations for this purpose.
Excellent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So this very much speaks for itself. But what I wanted to bring up was, you know, a lot, and I've spoken to the mayor directly. I believe he intends on having something done and announced very soon. So I'll be happy to take credit for giving him that idea, but I can't. A lot of cities in town are doing different fundraisers and doing different relief funds. There's gonna be a lot of, there's a lot of need out there. And the city's doing a tremendous job responding to the need. But fortunately, and I know that you've all gotten those calls, I've gotten calls from some people, some philanthropists that want to give us some money. And I just said, hold off until there's a fund created because there's so many different fundraisers. And I know everyone's me, everyone's trying to do something for their neighbors and for the residents. But I feel like But I feel like if there was a collaborative effort, uh, we'd be able to do more with it and there'd be more um, making sure it's going to the people in need most, uh, and making sure there's a little bit more oversight on it. So uh, if we can set that up, the city can really help um, uh, get funds from some of the businesses in the city that want to contribute and people that um, that uh, want to, want to help out. And they can help make sure that residents are getting the need that they, are getting what they need. Um, so I don't think, I don't think that the mayor would have any issue with that. I just think, he's working out the logistics. But any other councils want to speak on that? I know Eric Lampadecchio had um, Madam Clerk, I know Eric Lampadecchio sent us a uh, a letter in favor as well. As a resident, did you want to uh, just put that into the record? He, I'm, I'm mute. Oh, I'm mute. Hold on. Do you want to read that into the record?
Thank you. It's up to you. It's.
Yeah, you know what? He, yeah, please, because he had, he had quite a few comments tonight and uh, most of those motions were held off, so.
Okay, hold on. Let me just pull it up on my email. Hold on.
I can read it.
You, oh, you have it. I didn't have the email queued up.
Well, I, 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 this is an excellent motion, Counselor Keith. You know what? That guy's smart. There are many fundraisers and GoFundMes out there right now in a variety of places within our community. It makes sense for the city to establish a one fund and oversee this effort to help those affected by this horrible virus. Good comments. Put those into the record. Any other councils wishing to speak? No, I think we're all, oh, Counsel McKenna?
I was just going to say it's an excellent motion.
Great. Thank you.
Kind of go home.
If, if I just, if I could take the uh, Counsel Mad- Ashley Mado.
There's uh, there was, there was two late motions um, that were added by Counselor Visconti. Um, would you like to take those up? Okay, very good. Uh, late motion presented by Counselor Visconti that the mayor look into local food establishments not willing to deliver takeout to the Jack Satterhouse to our seniors. I've been told by several residents who live in the Jack Satterhouse that local food establishments are refusing to deliver takeout to them during this pandemic because it's the Jack Satterhouse. Our seniors that are quarantined there should not be refused delivery solely based on where they live.
Counsel Visconti.
Um, I, I, I got some phone calls uh, uh, yesterday uh, from some seniors at the Satterhouse that are a little disappointed um, about uh, some of our food establishments that just don't want to deliver their uh, takeout uh, there because of what they've gone through this last uh, um, month or, or month and a half, whatever it is. Um, and I just think it's, 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 it's wrong. Um, we should uh, I, I know they're quarantined. Um, but uh, they're doing a, a, a good job trying to clean up and uh, you know, uh, keep uh, that uh, that, that building safe. And uh, I don't think these uh, companies uh, in these food restaurants uh, should be, you know, not delivering to them, to be honest with you. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilors. We have a few panel, we have a few attendees that wish to speak, but any other councilors? And I know um, Counsel Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, I kind of agree with Counsel Visconti, but you can't make these people go into a place because they're still going to say, we're keeping our employees safe by keeping them away. All I would say is tell these folks who call these people, don't order from them and spread the word to, don't uh, get food from them. So that's what I would think.
I understand. Yeah.
Co- Counsel Morabito?
One thing, I, I agree with um, Counsel Visconti wholeheartedly. I think maybe we should reach out as a city to Jack Satterhouse. Maybe if they can put a temporary um, m- mailbox out, out front where deliveries can drop stuff off. Um, drop the food off. I, I'm not sure if that's something they can look into. I know how are they going to keep it warm? But at the same, they should have some kind of uh, designated location in the building, at the front of the building where, where a delivery driver can drop off their food. And maybe they, they'll be more likely to um, deliver the food.
So Counsel Morabito, to answer that, that's exact, uh, that's why there's a lot of misnomers out there. And I would imagine, you know, you just drop off. You, you, there's, there's the back entrance. There's a security guy that sits right there as the, as the, the uh, the doors open up. They don't let you go any further and you just go, here you go, room two oh one, whatever it may be. So I don't know if there's a mis, there's a miscommunication going on to the businesses. They don't have to go up to the apartments. They don't have, they're not allowed in, quite frankly. So uh, it's, it's disappointing, yeah, to hear that anyone would not be delivering there, but they may be thinking that they're supposed to go in. So we have to help that communication. But secondly, again, much like uh, we've talked about many times, we have to make sure that this is, like, we should contact the businesses. Obviously, I'm glad you didn't mention any businesses on the um, chat here. We should contact them to make sure that this is actually true. Um, and then maybe we can explain to them what in fact they can do um, or what they should be doing. And of course, it's their right. If they don't want to deliver somewhere, fine. But you know what? I'm sure everyone here in this, on this council would not be very supportive of that business if they're not supportive of our community.
Either that or we can put them in, on, on Counsel McKenna's naughty list. And uh, and then they feel the wrath of Counsel McKenna. I mean, that's an option as well.
Right. So we have a few residents uh, that wish to speak. Councilors, is it okay? We have uh, Eric Lampadecchio wishing to speak. You are unmuted. Hang on. I'm clicking it. I'm mute. Uh, keep doing it. Eric Lampadecchio.
Pat, can you hear me?
Yes, there you go.
Awesome. I just wanted to share with the council, uh, sorry, Eric Lampadecchio, forty-three Tapley Avenue. I submitted a three one one ticket on this item over the weekend as I got a few phone calls from a few friends at the Satterhouse as well. Um, I spoke with Charlie Jafreida as of five fifteen this evening. And his team's actively working on a couple of things like mailboxes and things like that. Um, we count some more beetle recommended. Um, but a couple of things, there's no way to legally force folks to deliver there as I believe Counsel Ira had said. Um, the city had looked into that and they're also looking into other things that they can do there. But I just wanted to share that Charlie Jafreida is kind of the point person of uh, the COVID task, uh, task force right now. And one of the things he shared with me is that the um, the manager of the Jack Satterhouse, Steve Post, is currently out of the office. Um, and his team is handling it. So there's been a little bit of a change in responsiveness. So I think some of that is factoring into um, the confusion on the delivery process for some of our business vendors.
Thank you. And we also have Ralph DeChico. We have another resident wishing to speak. We're going to unmute you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. That's what I was going to mention too. There is some confusion there with the, with the management. And the other, the other thing, Mr. uh, Counsel Visconti, is the, the other issue there that, that could be happening is the payment. Um, because I believe some of the residents um, that can't come out of their apartment is the payment. And the business owners uh, would deliver, but they are asking for the credit card payments uh, so that the mails can be getting up. So I think it's more of a miscommunication than anything, um, because the mails will be dropped outside. So you may want to relay that to the, the people that are calling both of yous with the complaints. Um, it's that, it's not that the businesses are not, that are not um, wanting to deliver. They are doing uh, what's called, um, I, I forget the exact word. It's no, no contact deliveries. So there's no cash transactions uh, is one, is one of the areas. And it's not just Revere businesses is doing that. It's nationally that's doing that.
Right. And I know that that, that could be something that's factoring into the issue is where they don't want to be doing cash because the transaction would have to be going up into the apartments. Um, and we have another, it looks like Wayne. Wayne, you wish to speak again?
I do. Wayne Rose, Nineteenth Thondike Street. Um, Patrick, you're right. There's a, there's a spot where they can bring the mails into the building. Um, and they drop them off. I also believe after talking to Steve Post, any money that would have to be handled, the residents can call downstairs and get the money downstairs. So I, I don't find that a problem. Um, I've mentioned this on social media many times already, uh, because I had many calls on it. I've also had many calls on uh, these people are looking to be tested in that building. I'm wondering why they can't be tested. I, I get it that this is a private building, but why don't they have the right to be tested? They're stuck in a.
President, point of order.
They're stuck in a building.
Question.
Correct, correct. So, thank you. And I, and I was going to respond to that. So um, uh, Mr. Mr. Rose, I, I, we're just going to stick to this point. I did hear your concerns and I've already reached out to uh, I've already reached out to Kim Hanton responding. So just want to make sure that I've reached out to Kim Hanton, who's really responding to the city's uh, response to the COVID from a health standpoint. Uh, she's going to get, be getting the, the answers to some of the questions you had. Um, but as, I just want to remind everyone, the Jack Satterhouse is a private building. It's not owned by the city. It's not run by the city and it's not a medical facility. So i- if, if residents, there are ways for every resident in the city to get tested now. Uh, I believe there's going to be some communication sent out. So if the residents in fact want to get tested, they will be able to, uh, I'll get you more of a, of a, of a, specifics of the Satterhouse. But um, quite frankly, you know, some residents do want to be tested, some residents don't. Um, if, I really don't want to take up this time to criticize uh, what's been happening in certain buildings. There's obviously, you know, this, the city, the state, the country, they've been overwhelmed with this uh, this uh, disease or this virus. And uh, you know, the city's done a really good job. I mean, certainly, there's always going to be more to be done. Um, I've said this before, we're not going to pat anyone on each other's back just yet. But they have a lot, we have a lot on our hands and everyone is really chipped in. The residents have been really good. The volunteers have been really good. Uh, the city's response has been tremendous. But you know, there is no, you know, every day, every week, you go back a, a, a month and say, oh, we should have done this. We should have done that. No one has the right answer right now. So I really would just hope that we all take the, the positive high road in, in, in our, in how we're reflecting on what, what's being done. Because just to criticize anyone at this point in time, especially uh, people that are do, that are working twenty-four seven, seven days a week, the last five, six, seven weeks would probably not be the way I'd want to go.
Asking questions is not criticizing.
Right. No, I understand. But you know, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you're criticizing. I'm just suggesting that, that we have to all, uh, you know, we, I think we could take a little bit more of a high road on some of these things. That's, that's, I'll leave it at that.
There is no high road when it comes to the elderly of this city.
Of course not. And I'm not sugge- I'm not suggesting that anyone, anyone ignore that, that their needs. And that's why we.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that being said, um, on your motion, uh, Counselor Visconti. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, another late motion by Counselor Visconti that the mayor look into our local gas stations possibly price gouging. A few miles up the road on the North Shore, prices are at least fifty to sixty cents cheaper than the prices in the city of Revere. As we all know, oil has plummeted, which has trickled down to these local gas stations buying gas at a significantly lower cost. Revere residents should also receive release, relief from gas prices as well during this pandemic.
Counsel Visconti.
Um, well, I, I, and I understand uh, all about capitalism. Um, but I think uh, uh, I, when, it's frustrating to travel three miles up the road and see gas prices sixty, sixty cents cheaper. And, and I understand people may say, well, travel up the road. I think it's uh, um, there, there's no reason why some of these gas stations in the city can't contribute and help our residents in lowering their gas prices as well. And I'm not saying match that, but at least when you see a sixty cent difference, um, it's a, it's a pretty, pretty significant uh, difference. And uh, like I said, I understand about capitalism, but I, I, I think it gets to a point where are they taking advantage of it as well?
That's it. I, I agree. Uh, it looks like Counsel Morabito, you have your hand raised. Do you want to speak or? No? Any? Counsel Serena?
Counselor Visconti, I think, I think it's a great motion. Um, if we're calling out people who are, you know, who are price gouging and doing a bad thing, I want to publicly name um, a gas station who I think has been doing a great job. Um, in Lyndon, in Lyndon Square, John's Gas Station, uh, Ward Six family, that's Allegro family. Um, they've had some of the cheapest gas around for the past month or so now. Um, so I just want to, I just want to give a shout out to where good businesses are, are, are acting during this. Thank you.
Thank you for your point, Counsel Serena. Any other Cons- Counsel Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think uh, Counsel McKenna put a motion in about price, price gouging in the last meeting or the meeting before. And people should be contacting the Attorney General's Office if this is the case. Um, I know we want to protect our people as much as possible uh, in Revere. But I think it's something that it's uh, it, they, people have to call the Attorney General's Office and file a consumer complaint against any, any place that they feel is too high. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McKenna?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Michael Wells, uh, City of Revere has been doing a great job going to different establishments and uh, finding them for the price gouging. So uh, we have, we do have the Attorney General, um, Ira, but we also have Michael Wells in the City of Revere that we can use spontaneously. So uh, he's been doing a great job and uh, you know, we should contact both. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counsel Novoselsky.
Yeah, just a little rebuttal on that. Michael's more of the food guy. And I think we ought to get the uh, John Ferrara, who is the weights and measures guy involved. You know, he works with, uh, for the city and get him involved and have him chase down these places and check it out. Thank you.
Agreed.
Any other councilors? Counsel Powers? Nope. All right. All in favor? All is sorted. God, Ma- Madam Clerk, any other business tonight?
Uh, no other further business.
So next, the next meeting will be May fourth and we will have a, a, a meeting on May fourth, regular meeting. Um, and I just wanted to say again, I know there was some comments in the beginning of the meeting and towards the end of the meeting. Um, you know, we're all in this together. The city is here to help you. Um, and just, you know, if we can just think about uh, taking the positive route on, on which direction we want to head, we can, we can do a lot more together. So everyone have a great night. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, guys. I love you.
Thank you.
Thanks.